And Commissioners are meeting as well.
Good morning, but welcome to the August 14th meeting and about a county commission, please stand one to the right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the supreme justice of all. Every couple of comments.
Good morning, Evan McMillan, Public Works. Just a reminder, the transfer station will be closed this Saturday for maintenance. Okay, thank you.
It's exciting being in the public work. Monday afternoon, listening on a team's call the afternoon with Jennifer Manuel, Katie and she, along with Diane Creed, they have a Richie from the Health Department to discuss the childcare license to for the region. Looks like there'll be some changes coming in 2026. It was like the phone agent discussed it around this morning, so I'm still in the business of it. It's like there'll be some changes taken place in 2026. Tuesday evening, I met with John Hadler and gave me Rose Arbrace for the Paul Press Energy out of Oklahoma, Nebraska. At all, this is Paul Press House. That was probably a coincidence, maybe I didn't know that any company were out with that suggestion. They thought it was kind of funny. It's a successful project they're working on, potentially here in the southeast part of Riley County. And this will be extended all the way through western Texas. Everything's in the preliminary stages. They wanted to reach out and lay out what the vision was and provide some information about a map of it. If anybody wants to see it, when they get established digitally, they'll be sending that along too. So if there's any questions or concerns with constituents in that area, because it lies in my district, just wanted to give you a heads up. So Wednesday afternoon, I spoke with Dawson Blacker from Wildcat 9109, working on the article on the decriminalization of CBT products. Apparently that's become an issue here for some reason. I wonder their perspective on events that have taken place here locally, my thoughts on federal, state and local policies. The drive to discussing enforcement of the laws themselves and interpretation policies that are currently in place. And had a great discussion. Looks like they may be changing the reclassifying some things at the federal level, which obviously changes technically down, down the pipe. Although it's kind of hard to get to speak at the point in time. That's lost my place. Okay. Wednesday, I thought this was worth bringing up as well, the 11th County Commission. We took the second provision of the RHI lead in the city of Lansing with a vote of four to one. This proposition, the bare possibility still to the district to get there, but decided not to go through with that. It's like 406 houses on the very western side of Lansing there. The, so that was a big thing and really, really. Thinking of that, probably won't come back up, but yes. So other than that, then basically we need to work. It's great. I'm going to stay caught up. It's usually difficult this time of the year. It's now only nine days away from leading a college football team to take my move next five months. That's all of them.
Okay, well, let's see. Monday afternoon, I had appointments with my chiropractor and physical therapist. And kind of packed day with that. They both helped me out, had a good. Tuesday, I attended a personnel committee meeting of the church. We've been going over the employee handbook and advising the section on abuse protection for youth and vulnerable adults. I guess the insurance companies are really cracking down on those kinds of things. In churches and a lot of businesses, so something we may go over eventually. It took a long time to go through all that, so finally ready to send it to the church council. That evening, I attended a meeting of the Democratic Party at Potterfall. Potterfall, it's great. They cleaned all the floors and waxed them and it's really nice over there.
They put on all the rugs?
No.
I didn't wear them nice.
No, well, yeah, I was still like involved and stuff, but it was, the floor was getting a little. They did have a guest speaker who was with ACLU who spoke about legal issues. We're in DC and in the country, but it's really interesting environment. A lot of dialogue. Wednesday, I spent the afternoon working on topics, um, within reason that I'm going on. And also reviewed the agenda and documents, Jason.
Well, Tuesday, I attended the Flood Hills Veterans Coalition meeting. They discussed having a raffle that kind of close to the parade so happened. A lot of discussion on the parade. I just don't think we were told RCPD would do the barricades, since we're told they're not. So they had a meeting with. Yesterday, RCPD and the RPC and the Coalition to see what's been happening this year. And Fort Riley Feller Guard may be available to the parade again. The elimination, they said the elimination of that at the Feller Guard and the museum has been given a six month extension. Then there's also discussion about membership and attendance to meetings gone down the last couple of years. Tuesday evening was Riley City Council meeting. Russell Stutey and the Assistant Chiefs attended. Riley's considering closing their fire department, discussed how to change the work with the county and county equipment. County had no fire station right next to the cities. There's so, you know, this, this was meeting, just to gather more information, no final decision made at a later meeting. And then there was some discussion on the proposed feedlot north of town. Well, the city said the same as us, we can't do a thing about it. It's KDH's rules. We don't have any rules ever. And that's the same from the county. The mayor was saying that, I said, you know, you know, we're not allowed to do anything, so. Wednesday, the building committee met with the contractor for the new EM Fire Building. VHS presented their estimate based on the front plans. Several plans, several changes were discussed, and they're going to work on revising some numbers for a meeting next month.
It's, uh, you mentioned.
Yeah, I think.
The, also issued morning, Josh Aaron was on. I think he had a thing to do. He performed a really good job, I thought. And I also, from which day, Monday or Tuesday, had a call from Aaron Estebroa. Regarding the decriminalization of marijuana, what we can do about it. We'll wait to see what happens.
I would imagine that that would be a state level one then.
You said it, well, federal change and then state. But what else do I worry about when it gets here? And then also had a long call with Josh Brewer from Habitat. About they're trying to look at some stuff for RHI, wanting to sit down and have a discussion. More about what was needed to get them approved and what the intent was. Had a, had a really good conversation. He's trying to get a working group together to. Review the stuff ahead of us. We tried to say review it ahead of time instead of waiting to hold plans done, so. Needs to contact later for if he gets meeting set up. And that's what I.
I'm glad, uh, Commissioners, all of you liked the example, the policy practice. They make communication news speaking. I heard these bad.
Yeah, it has to do with the child care facility, that director.
Uh, let me see. That's okay. All of you want to attend?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Do you enjoy it?
Yes.
You would, uh, speak annually and talk to listeners. And at Riley County Employee Action. First, Mr. Harold Summers, Customer Service Director, Two, Treasurer, Office, Separation Service. Ellie Erleman, Senior Labor Republican Works Department, Separation Service. Officer, Osteella Garcia, Senior Labor Republican Works Department, Separation Service. You know, you're a volunteer firefighter. Fire Division Number One, Bailey Hattick, Battle James, Praiser Two, and the Praiser Department. Natalie Olkerman, Promotion and Praiser Support Two, and the Praiser's Office. Probably Brewer for promotion as a Praiser Support Two, Praiser's Office. All.
He has not some low level positions up.
Oh.
I'll just mention the first one, and then you talk about Praisers. Commissioners, just as a reminder, the physician in the treasurer's office will not be filled. That's the position we will go down for 2026. So just, just a reminder, that's the one. And then she can explain the title changes, but I think Greg, you're, you're on the right track.
We had planned promotions for 2025 already for when they were personal property physicians. Education was updated based on the needs for those support two roles. Those needs have been met, and that's why there's the promotion. Again, still budgeted for 25 and for 26. So it was just, as we kind of discussed already, just that shifting of responsibilities. Bringing on more residential responsibilities to the front.
Does it have to be their staff one too?
Yes. Nope.
Just have a job in your own profession.
Hey, good one.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep. Good.
Thank you.
Well, the president gave the minutes, started off there. I didn't see anything that needs to be changed, just going.
I didn't either.
Uh, I made a motion into approved the minutes as written from the August 11th meeting of the Riley County Commission.
Or seconded.
Been moved in seconded to approve the minutes from the meeting of August 11th, all in favor. Do you want to say, okay, Commissioner?
Yeah. Any items, Commissioner, first onwards? Eight on the turn of the nine.
Sam knows. I couldn't get him to say that one.
All right.
Very, very good.
The best work. So.
My joy.
It's me.
Well, I think. So.
So.
It's not your.
He's not. Thanks. Right. Beautiful as this. Yes. They're leaving. I believe in him. At this point, I'm trying to be a lot. Yeah. He's mad. He didn't know for a couple of days. Chance of his life. Then. Didn't go. It's a lot. It was. This way. But he was.
Oh, I mean, it's about the same. You can spend the day. I'm. So she is. And. And you're right. You know, it's a really more.
I've been thinking about this.
For me. I say mine. One thing. Two.
They go last. Really? And goes by fast through info dispatch. As I mean, I see something. It's a need other than. Three things. Her was Johnny. Whether I would be like, I didn't get safe. You have some people there. And be perfect football game. That would. Especially Brian. Do they have like. Could be mostly, mostly. Sure. Is there somebody that have a hot on a boat or something going over there? Huh? On a boat?
I don't know. I can't.
Boat.
Sorry.
That's. Yeah. Instead of flying, can you like hop on a boat or something? Yeah. Something. Just like. Give it out. I mean. You know. And get it for sixty five degrees. Then we have. Not even high end to the world. No, no. Non. Then it could also. She might have a mission. Yes. Well, Jacob's. The world. If you cheat. Friend. Actually. I. And she had. The only for the. So.
No. Job is like.
And she's temporary.
But she won't be vulnerable. Yes.
Yeah.
So that's what they distract us. That'll get a little more. We'll go to sleep.
Okay.
I'm.
I'm not. Then we know the last. Actually. A man.
Oh, no. Most could say not go well for me. I would be like on the ground. I mean. And the little sea bands you put on your wrist. So. But on the air, I do not do.
Also, I very.
Now, when we went to Hawaii, I had the sea bands and I was fine. And until we got in the water and I took the sea bands off. I got water in my ear and I'm so worried. I'm gonna get back out onto the boat, the sea bands back off.
It's okay to fly over the body to come in the water.
It was the water in the ear and the boat stuff. I did fine on both as long as I had those sea bands and the.
Drank with you. Just a sea man.
And see that there's sea bands that you put them on your wrist. They.
They like that money.
No. Some I don't understand it, but it has a pressure point like it hits on my wrist. And honestly, when I put it back on, I got on full. I was fine. It took about fifteen minutes. So it not.
Somebody. Well, I could have drowned me, but never a sea man.
Yeah, drowning me didn't help. I took that too. So the sea band who was saving me from, you know.
Or she. He was about a lot of them. Twenty bucks.
The sea bands? I I just, I mean. I it's just one pack. And they just. You just wear two of them and I would pour that thing the rest of the way. Like, you know, you're not. I don't like to be green. So. But.
Yeah. But use the strap. I see you put it on an ankle for that. You can. That's.
No.
Everybody's just gonna be fine.
It's just the equilibrium, such thing as like, I don't know. After.
No, it's good enough.
Yeah. After the car ride, I can't do anything that spins or pump the water or. You know. But I wear the sea band and I'm like, hey, go do some sea bands. There was actually one of your employees of mine who then reduced me to those things. The same. I mean, who could it be?
Did we? Did your place?
Just. Yeah, just someone to.
Just. Just. I didn't.
I said, I did the ones with them. But they're all good. So it'd be like, no time to be trouble.
There you go.
I've got seventeen.
So he has. The skills wouldn't train someone.
What they do, that's.
Yeah.
Help me. He knows that he can translate. He's saying it too.
We've gone from your box site to oils and this is like a. We've gone from that was an internal party that's to the external. Yeah, he's so. I would go. We can stay on.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
Well, you know. And I I completely support her. And it is great. It's not me.
I gotta tell. Next year. So. No, look at me.
It's okay. Okay. How it works. It's not like.
Always good. It's nice. All this. But these are evil. If. They. Then I start wondering. And I started today. Sorry.
Cast off.
That was a little period. Was like, okay, yeah, they're out. Yeah. They say.
They say.
Yes. And there's a lot of.
Oh, no. Well.
But this area is supporting for children.
Oh, yeah. I did tell that. A lot of stories of the.
Really? Sure.
They were out in the. Better. Taking the medic. Bunch of them. Rob. I've noticed. But I was like, it's seven. It's like. I was.
I started to sell.
They're they're all.
Okay. I just mean.
I think they're like all have their own vehicles.
Yeah. Yeah, it was best just she. She's here with me. My goodness.
I was dropping on Sunset. Anderson. Bunch of them that had blue hair. They were all wearing blue costumes and stuff. Oh, girl. Yeah. I guess that's initiation. It was when I messaged fresh when he replied, yeah, Andy.
So you're a slogan.
Or. Oh, you're.
I did it. I did it.
I'm. She just. So she can be.
I'm.
I just tried to. She's. New service. Here.
That's. I don't even.
It's. You know. This.
Yeah.
My goodness.
For her. I know. He. Yeah. You understand it or. Or say that. That's the. Thank you.
All right. Good morning, Commissioner Jacob Hansen, Riley County Councilor. Uh, here today, I got two topics I want to kind of go over. Uh, first. Uh, as we are all acutely aware and discuss a little bit this morning is about the feedlot operation going on. And uh, outside of Riley. Um, it's been brought to my attention, maybe there is some interest and I'd like to gauge the commissioner's interest and perhaps submitting a letter. Uh, during this whole public comment session that they have going on, that's thirty days. Uh, in reviewing the process in which KDA he interprets, you know, public comments and the purposes of those public comments. Uh, they're supposed to really conform to, does the permit? Uh, conform to statutes and regulations? Does the permit or the operation uh, have any concerns regarding regarding the control of water pollution? Uh, things of that nature. As far as general, general grievances, um, likely to be unpersuasive. Uh, and frankly, I don't know or have the information or the expertise to tell you whether or not that this proposed feedlot is one that necessarily conforms to statute or regulation. It's something I can spend time looking into if there is interest. Um, but I leave that to the board to let me know if that's something you all are interested in.
I'm actually. KDA he's done that thing for me as well. I understand. In that I've had conversations. It's been. Uh. Not this way. Taken races. But. Requirements.
To remember.
That's why I'm kidding.
It's. I like it. And I was just saying. Yeah, it's just. Right now.
They can do it all the way up tonight.
Yeah. There isn't. Nineteen six thirty. Air nature achievement. I saw something. No, that wasn't. Uh. KDA. There's. There was a. Meeting. On. City officially. Been on three. Regulations. KDA regulations. And. Where it's. Awesome information. It's had names associated with. KDA. He's supposed to be in this meeting nineteen. When commissioners. Bicycle. But it was. City commissioners. But he was like, you would say. What he can tell city requirements is better.
Essentially, yeah. And that's what the, again, the a a letter that wouldn't have that as the main topic would not necessarily probably be worth the effort. But again, I'm I'm willing to do that if the board would like me to, but.
It's.
Not likely.
I guess they're changing version. So. They're gonna be. You said they'd be. KDA. Important.
Yeah, and I mean, essentially, you got problems with procedural due process rights or uh, with as as a respect with respect to property. Because if if they meet all of the statutory requirements, uh, and then they are denied a permit and you're essentially depriving them of use of that property, which then you run into another.
Well, that's something you talk about is it's sort of lagoon. They're saying there's grassland dispersion. And.
Yeah.
There's question about that because especially. You know, it is, there's somebody just downstream from it that runs right. They they already, there already floods, but it rains heavy up there.
Yeah.
So it might be going a lot of places. That would be.
Interesting. I mean, that 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 ought to be probably something they consider, I suppose. Well, and that with respect to that, then I will not proceed with drafting a letter. Uh, for the public comment session. Uh, the next topic I would like to go over during my uh, the administrator session time, of course, is, and as I spoke for, is regarding the legislative ideas that we got with KAC. And I'm gonna be asking, of course, for your authorization to submit those to KAC for that legislative policy. Um, committee. Um, before I list the ones that we have essentially nailed down, there is, there was an addition. Uh, made, and that was by uh, Chief Stuki. Um, and he proposed perhaps making some legislation or that requires state agencies that own a certain amount of land, probably put a cap on or a minimum on the amount of land involved. Uh, and require them to develop a a plan to maintain the properties through prescribed burns and other, you know, uh, maintenance, general maintenance to kind of help prevent fires. Um, I'm not aware of any legislation that necessarily exists at this time. Um, and it might be something of interest. Uh, that we can bring up in KAC if if the board so chooses. And then I, of course, I ask Russell to be here to provide any additional context if you guys have questions.
That's what I'm. Sorry. It's that problem.
So with the last big fires that we've had, you know, up north, it's. Core of engineers own ground, but it's ground leased by Wildlife and Parks. We have north of. Randolph. And. You know, right now, it's it's kind of let run wild and it just so happens that yesterday I got a call from the Speaker of the House, uh, aide to the Speaker of the House. And rep, well, back up a little bit. Representative Bill Bloom was called me numerous times saying, hey, we're gonna try and get you some reimbursement for all that work you had to do on the state ground up there. To try and control that fire. And, you know, what we really need, I mean, if they can give us some money, great, but. Uh, I'm not holding my breath on that, but. Uh. What would really be more beneficial is is them creating fire breaks, you know, cutting fire breaks through that property, having maintaining roads where you can actually access it. And, you know, doing prescribed burns to lower, when it's appropriate, to lower the fuel load. And so when um. Tyler Coats, I think was his name, called me yesterday and was inquiring. Uh. He happens to be a volunteer firefighter from Butler County who has done some forest firework. We, and I was. Saying that to him, he's like, yep, that makes perfect sense to me. I think that's something we can get done. He said, we'll inquire about funding and stuff, but I said, yeah, I, he said, we'll call KDM. I'm like, well, KDM was involved the whole time and. Do what you think's best on that. But I said, long term, the best fix would be legislation. Like Jacob said, you know, whatever the number is for property owned or leased by state agencies that, you know, say a. A minimum of fifty acres or more or something like that, that they have to develop a a. Prescribed burn management plan approved by the Kansas Forest Service and uh, to try and uh, mitigate some of these big fires. And I'm not saying they start the fires, but when it comes from one property and it's on their property and then we can't even, you know, there's thousands of acres there that we can't even access. Kind of got to let it burn until it comes out on whoever's property. You know, I mean, we get in there and we try to find it, but we just can't get in there because it's just let go wild. So. And when I've mentioned that in some. Other fire groups, we're like, yeah, we got that problem on our lake too. It's not just here. So I think. If. Mr. Coats, which I assume he does, knows what he's talking about, there may be an avenue for some traction, you know, through the Speaker of the House or something like that.
Yeah. Bronson. Yeah. Heard that there are speakers in favor of something. It didn't go through. You. Yeah. The here that he wants, but it. Stop when it should be. I don't. Foundation.
I I would think, but. Common sense and. Yeah.
But. Pretty common.
Any other questions?
Thanks.
All right. With that said, um, I'd like to just go over again, the basic understanding of what I'm going to submit for KAC. And just for any members of the public that are listening, uh, the purpose of providing these ideas to KAC is so that they can uh, choose on whether or not they're gonna advocate for these kind of legislative changes. There's no um, other. Suppose purpose other than that. So with that being said, uh, the first uh, and probably most common topic that we push for here in Riley County is, of course, constitutional home rule.
I'm. Good.
Certainly.
I think we should dump that at this point in time.
Okay.
The reason being is this next year is going to be election year. Um, we already have one very confusing constitutional amendment that we're gonna be voting on, potentially a second one. I just don't think there's any way you're gonna get a third one through. And I think maybe it'd be better to just use their efforts someplace else and work on that and down the road after we know what you keep shipment and your house that you send and sample like.
It was a back. Does that go through? That's.
It'd be, yeah, it would, yeah, exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true. They'd be proving.
The question to then be put to the people to that vote on.
Be two thirds. By two thirds. The House and the Senate. Um, I just. I think that's a state part of this next year before I think about them. Um, obviously, there's other topics that need to be discussed. Thank you for this. We don't need a list of neighbors. But this will three or four.
Okay.
Because remember, we'll have a conference in November and discuss those items. Our.
Hmm.
Don't they? We need a three or four on possession. But I can take time to.
Right. It's just from the board to remove that.
Probably.
Forget.
Okay. The ball.
Sounds good.
It happened. Tax. Yeah. The other thing about this is that there are. Pretty big lobbying incident. Um, and there are some of the small counties that. Aren't gonna vote against it after this. You have to remember, KAC is advocating for its county membership, not just. Singular piles with singular families.
Right.
Just like that.
All right. Well, with that one removed, we'll move on to, of course, our short term rental enforcement. Uh, we had a statute drafted last year. I imagine we just kind of pushed the same um, idea again this year. Um, and so does the board? Uh.
Chair, I'm trying to remove. That. With the ninety day session, it's a thing that's kind of. Compressed, but. Did we? Did that make it to a committee? Did that?
I'm not certain that it.
Did I get supervisor? I I don't think it.
I don't, I'm not there.
Okay. I was trying to, I was trying to remember everything in front was chaotic, everything in the back out was chaotic. Okay.
Correct. So.
And.
Keep keep short term rental? Okay. All right. The next I have here on my list is uh, speaking with Anna, of course, for Kennedy County Appraiser. Uh, we're looking at potentially revising a statute to limit the timing of documents, uh, certainly fee appraisals. Uh, when appealing to the Board of Tax Appeals. Uh, you know, we're not exactly sure what that revision is gonna look like just yet, but we'll nail that down and get that submitted to KAC for consideration if the board still in agreement with that. Okay. Our next topic that I have written down is motor vehicle registration fees. Is that, is that something we want to continue to push?
Yeah. If there's a question, we would join in.
All right. Very good. And then, uh, lastly, here we have uh, the topic that Barry brought up, uh, which is local, other local government units intentionally moving people to the county and imposing costs. On the county. Uh, maybe it would have to be so draft legislation to try to prohibit that.
It's a state by issue or is that just a local issue here? Because it's a local issue here. That's something that we probably need to work on here. It's a KAC issue.
Well, we could. The the problem is is that we wouldn't be able to necessarily. The the relationship is between counties, counties to county. And that's gonna require state involvement.
But that's gonna be kind of the local kind of regional delegation.
Hmm.
Draft something. That's not so much the entire boundary. Of of the state. What I'm saying.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know if there's another location like Wichita or Topeka. Lawrence or something that's having a considerable challenge with this, that this is just a challenge in our area.
Yeah. I've, it does make sense. I want to say that it's probably not just regional. I imagine Lawrence and Topeka and Wichita, they're all, everybody's experiencing these kinds of issues. It's not just specific to Riley County by cities.
But I assume, I assume there, but. Um, I haven't really heard anything coming out of the larger cities.
Um, I suppose chances, considering this is, you know, of course, a. Those KAC.
Those areas, those places that have strong social service networks, we certainly do.
Right.
Counties.
Right. Most of them don't.
Yeah.
So I'm just, I'm more curious. I'm not saying it's not an issue of just saying, maybe that's something that we work on separately with. Kind of a regional delegation to see if we can solve and I mean, that's not so much a case.
KAC.
I would say, although we're asking for reimbursement in county to county, we still have.
Asking for reimbursement on other things we're not, so you're not gonna solve the problem.
Yeah, we would be able to ask, but we wouldn't be able to enforce. Yeah.
So if we get something going, would we? Life extension would be enforced.
Yeah. Ideally, right? You know, I can't, I can't say for for certain, but.
That's twenty dollars to stake and lots of.
Ah.
Thank you guys for springing a million dollars.
So it is. Do I get one freebie at least? One, one freebie?
I thought. That's a good.
Ah, man.
Yeah.
Rough go. Too bad it wasn't a district report or something calling me. I can use that.
Just to fill the book, guys. Very. So people. Where they. Most kind of seven against. To send in ID. Issue there.
Yeah.
I'd be curious on that. Maybe let's bring it up.
Okay.
You'll have representatives, I know, from that was a Chinese handle there, so.
Very good. All right. Well, with that, um, I will. The way, the way I that I'm just phrasing it is local government units intentionally moving people to county and imposing costs unilaterally.
If that's.
Yeah. It's uh, the language I came up with. Uh. Apparently, yeah, I can't, I don't know about that, but I don't have a very short way of stating uh, Russell's suggestion. Um, so. As far as that goes, I think you.
Maybe this. Let's.
Yeah, I think that works. Um, so just to. There definitely is that. So um just to be very clear for submissions to KAC Policy Committee. I'm going to include short term rental enforcement, revision of the statute uh with respect to BOTA, motor vehicle registration fees. Uh, the, the local government issue that I, we were just talking about. Um, and then also include Chief Stewkey's um discussion about having um. Maintenance plan and prescribed burns on Kansas lease property or own property. Does it sound? Do I have authorization from the board to move forward with that? Yeah, be one, two, three, yep. It says this, very good. Any uh other questions for me as I have a little less than a minute remaining? All right, very good.
Thank you. Ready? No bid opening here for the year's end uh management improvement. First one I have is from shilling construction. Let's see the basement just yet, but um alternate one bid I'm showing is three hundred thirty-three thousand and eighty dollars. And I thought I'm showing some alternative two or three. Um, proposed start date would be October fifteenth this year. Um, proposed working days would be twenty. Except for thirty-three thousand is still totally good, I, I can see.
There's no, there's no basement on, on sale.
Because it's just one bid that's been for all of them. There's no base, there's just one, two, three. That should one bit on there, so that's covered all a bit.
Right, this bit's from shilling construction, there is a. Bit on patch. And over one, oh, bit, three hundred and thirty-three thousand and eighty dollars. Start date is October fifteenth, twenty working days.
Well, number two that I have is fire construction, that's also the man time. See, basically, yeah, but uh open one that I have is three hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and sixty. Uh, alternate two that I have is five hundred and eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five. The third one that I see here is for six hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. Well, my, six hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five. So many two different points here, um. Those start dates is asphalt would be September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, those working days is twenty. And it says this concrete, um, that'll be April twenty, two thousand and twenty-six, forty-five days on that.
So the concrete was the option of three.
How many days on the concrete? April twenty-eighth, uh, of next year.
A buyer construction, there is a bid on patch. No addendums. Alternate one, total price three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. Alternate two is ran at five hundred and eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars. Alternative three, six hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. The asphalt start date is September fifteenth, for twenty working days. Concrete darkness, April twenty-eighth, twenty-sixth, start date and forty-five days.
Well, I would like a lot going to uh refund these bids to staff for their consideration and recommendation.
Second.
The mood is safe and just. Turn these uh, turn bits to staff for their review and recommendation, all favors. They wanted to keep sending. Even.
Good morning, Commissioner Shiloh Hager, Riley County Treasurer, and I have the July revenue report for you. So the month of July, we ended with a balance in the general fund of thirteen million, one hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. Um, you can see um through the end of July, we are, we have a balance in the ARPA funds of three million, seven hundred and two thousand, seven thirty-two. Seventy-nine. We have total fund balances for the end of July of eighty million, four hundred and ninety-four thousand, five seventy-two. Thirty-nine. We're still holding with um fifteen million um in CDs that have been invested. Um, and you can see on the left-hand side, the rest of our asset breakout. Our interest income for the month of July. Or net interest for the um year-to-date month of July is one million, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, eighty-five dollars and fifty-six cents. Um, when you look at the next, when I show you the next page, you'll see um what our net interest just for July was. Our active checking account is still earning an, an APY of four point four three percent. And um we are still receiving um almost four and a quarter percent on our CD um bids. So um like I said, I've, I'm still trying to lock some of that money in at that rate right now. If, you know, I know they're anticipating rates to drop, so I want to still have some, somebody locked in at that rate, which will. You know, I usually put those in for a year, so those will be interest, guaranteed interest for next year. Um, the ARPA interest year-to-date is a hundred and sixty-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty-five cents. So your July, um. General fund revenues, um, you can see here, oops. Um, year to, or for the month, you can see that we are about thirty-five percent under what was budgeted for the month. That's really just a timing issue because if you look up here at our investment interest. Um, for the month was only thirty-three thousand dollars because July is when we do the trans. The quarterly transfer of interest into the CIP, um, so it's just a timing issue. It'll, it'll clear itself out. Um, you can also see here that um. Our um. County highway money we had budgeted um for July, it, another timing issue, it didn't come in until August first. So it'll go the other way for August because we won't have that, have had that budgeted for the month of August. Um, but you can see year-to-date through the month of July, we are right on what was budgeted through, um, through the month of July. Year-to-date, um, we have collected eighty-three point seven-seven percent of total budgeted revenues for the general fund. Any questions about any of that? The sales tax that the county retains for the month of July. For this um general fund, sales tax was a hundred and ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty cents. You can see that's about one percent less than what it was at this time last year. Um, about five point seven percent over what was budgeted for the month. Year-to-date, we are sitting at right at one point four four percent um over budget for what we budgeted for. Um, of the two point two million that we budgeted for the general fund um sales tax. Road and Bridge Sales Tax Fund came um in at two hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. Um, about two point seven-two percent higher than what we received in July of twenty-four. Um, about thirty-nine percent over what was budgeted for the month. And year-to-date of the two million that we budgeted, we are almost twenty percent over budget for the Road and Bridge Fund. Any questions about that? Hey, the next fund shows, or shows year-to-date total sales tax that was collected in the county. Um, general fund and both Road and Bridge, we are at three point six seven percent higher than we were at this point. Last year. You can see here, the general fund and Road and Bridge was about one point two seven percent lower. Than last month's sales tax numbers. This shows you your breakout between the various um categories. Every, still retail trade is, makes up the biggest part of our um, of our sales tax. And then this last slide shows you the, the actual distribution among the small cities and what the county retains of the total. Of the whole total eight hundred and ten thousand that was brought in for the month of July. Any questions about that?
That's so your work, way back up, just to get spinning the news, I don't, but it's the RCPD seizure funds.
Those are, I believe, um, those are, when RCPD um seizes assets from a case. Then they can then, I believe they can auction those off and um by statute, they were required to now break those out. Into their own separate funds and they are, we are required to, any interest that those funds earn. We're supposed, they, we have to credit it to that fund. So that's all RCPD's money, we're just holding, we just hold it on their behalf. Same thing with um. So this line item right here, this three point seven million, those are all RCPD funds that we are just, we are just the holder of the funds. Yeah, so anytime they get um deposits, their, their appropriations, they bring a paid in over. And then usually twice a month, they request us to transfer money out of our checking account into their checking account so that they can pay their bills. So whenever you approve at the law board, when you approve their um accounts payable and payroll. They send me a letter asking me to transfer money out of their fund and put it in so that they can actually pay the bills. We just, we're just the holder of their, of their funds.
So is the city home that portion of it too?
No, the, when it, when they make their dish, their, when the city sends the um RCPD their appropriation. Then they bring a paid in over to us and we deposit it into their fund. And somebody who's been here longer than me would have, because that's just, I know it's just always, it's been done that way since I've been the accountant, so.
But then we have to turn around and pay for a lot of those expenses.
That is a different line item. Those expenses come out of this RCPD levy inmate medical. So right now it has a fund balance of just over a million dollars. These are, these are the, their um accounts payable, their payroll comes out of, it's our fund one forty-two. Um, they have a IT reserve fund, um, they have an emergency fund. And then the two seizure funds are all what makes up that three point seven nine eight. But just by statute, um, when they set up those seizure funds was when we had to then start allocating. A portion of the interest, so year-to-date, they've had ten thousand dollars that has been transferred out of. Our general fund interest. So, year-to-date, they've had ten thousand dollars that has been transferred out of our general fund interest to their fund. Yeah, these are the numbers, year-to-date, these are the numbers that we have total transferred out of our interest income for, for this year. And then there'll be one more transferred done in October, and then that'll finish up the year.
And if you're involved with me, they have, I said in their monthly reports every month, so everybody, the financial reports that she's showing are the one, system of that. So, you do see the tax funds, and then of course, the RCPD fund that wouldn't manage, you know, for their inmate medical, so they showed that a lot.
Those are all allowed specifically by statute, right, that the cities have a study, but they have entrance. That money is only for distributions, they're going to, who wants to be afraid to attach over everything through seizure client explaining.
Why no one back and forth?
That's, that's why people have a misconception, the city, county, yards are so similar, they're so different. They didn't do the price, so they didn't do the action, they didn't do the distribution and the foundation of the actions.
Any other questions about the reports? Yeah, you asked a question of me this month. And I could answer it, yeah.
Work on that next month.
You're trying to stump me?
I'll find another one.
Okay. Um, just, everything's going pretty smooth in the treasurer's office, just status quo. I do want to just, just go ahead, while I'm up here, just another reminder that the last day the treasurer's office will provide driver's license services is August twenty-ninth. I have notified the state, they will be coming sometime in September to pick up their equipment. So, so we're out, we'll be out of the driver's license business, and we'll be just totally focusing all of our attention on motor vehicle. And then just, we are getting ready to gear up, looking at our next approach for the legislative season as to, you know, our bill is still alive. I've been getting some emails from, because they're doing a legislative post-audit, and motor vehicle fees and the cost of unfunded mandates, they're looking at that right now. And two of the areas that they're looking at is the motor vehicle operations and ad valorem tax collection, what it costs the counties to do that. Riley County wasn't one of the ones asked to participate in the survey yet, so. But I know for motor vehicle, it was a large county, Johnson, LaBette was a middle, and Gove was the small. And then they have asked for some of our data that we've provided to the legislators when we were working on the bill, so I have provided that. So, anxious to see what that report comes, comes back with, so, other than that.
Oh, I didn't, my tags, my car tags and taxes and the going online to reserve a spot and getting in there, make it very easy.
Yep, I, you know, I always say, we, we service the appointments first, so we encourage people to make that appointment. So, we can, we know kind of where we can put our staff to, so. Yeah, all right, well, thank you very much, and I will see you all next month.
I'm not, yeah, that's, that works out well, so, appreciate it. We have the top part. Thank you, Chairman Kitten, Commissioners, appreciate that you came to be here. Darren Solden from the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce, economic development update, and then Christian will talk some about military as well. We also have Stephen Zimmer with us today, so Stephen's from Minnesota, but he's a graduate student at K-State, been interning with us this summer. He is getting a master's degree in public administration, and so he's been doing a bunch of work with us across multiple different economic development initiatives. And, and, and so anyway, he's joining us today as well. But I'm just going to touch on, touch on a couple of projects. One, last week, the city approved sale of three lots out the, at the business park by the airport. That's lots six, seven, and eight, about eight point five acres total, to Torgerson Electric, Torgerson's headquartered at Pika. Big electrical contractor, service provider, do a lot of work around here. You know, whether it's K-State, or Athletics, or Fort Riley, or other things. And so, you see their, see their signs up on the, up on the fence, and their trucks around it, a lot of, a lot of large, large-scale industrial and commercial construction sites. They're going to do about a five million dollar project, and up to twenty-five jobs, that'll, that will include fabrication and manufacturing. So, they refab a lot of the component, or a lot of the units, different component parts, things that go into, into those large industrial and commercial projects. They'll also do administration and support for, for construction and service that they do kind of Manhattan and Points West. And so, I think that's a great project, so that will get going from a, obviously, there's still a real estate deal to close there, but that'll get going from a construction standpoint later this year. The Amazon project out there have, if you've been out there, it's plenty dusty. It's, they're moving dirt, and moving dirt quickly, as, yeah. The, but they are, that, that real estate deal closed here a couple of weeks ago, and they got right to work, so no MCMs out there moving some things around. And, and, yep, looking, looking forward to, looking forward to that all, all getting underway with the, with the construction and things eventually coming up out of the ground. But just a reminder, both those projects, no property tax abatements, no other, no other city, you know, economic development dollars or anything. So, don't have exact numbers, obviously, until, until construction's done and valuation happens. But, you know, just a reminder that every, every ten million dollars in new commercial, new commercial valuations, you know, pushing four hundred thousand dollars in annual property tax collection, and ninety-five plus thousand of that coming to the county. So, obviously, those are the kind of projects that we'd like to keep, keep pushing for and, and trying to make sure that, that if possible, right, when the situation's right, that, that we're getting a good deal for everybody involved in those, in those. Another thing from a business development standpoint, that, that, you know, this is a lot of the behind-the-scenes work that goes on over the period of time, that eventually leads to, to good things. But George Cant on our team's been, been really involved with, he hosts a number of different roundtable groups. We've got a healthcare roundtable group that gets together regularly, there's a financial services and banking roundtable group, there's a manufacturing and construction roundtable group. Another one that's been meeting on a regular basis has been a tech roundtable. And so, obviously, we're not, we have a number of companies in, in the community that you would consider tech companies, but then you also have a number of companies that have a tech function within their, within their business operations. And, and, and obviously, we've got several in that space that have a lot of growth potential and are growing. And so, we want to make sure that they can grow as much in this region as possible, because obviously, those are the kinds of companies, many times, you see that they go elsewhere to hire talent, or they work remote. And so, we want to see that growth happen here, so we can see the biggest impact, you know, from a property tax, sales tax, all that good, good stuff go on. And so, that group's been meeting, we brought in a gentleman from Lincoln, Nebraska last week, and had a really good session with him. His name's Brian Artinger, he was a key driver and continues to be in some of the efforts that Lincoln has put into really growing their, their, their tech hub or their tech business. You know, you've got Huddle up there, has grown out of, you know, three University of Nebraska graduates have started a company, and, and it grew, and they created, sourced a lot of funding locally, and they've continued to grow. And now they've got a big office there in downtown Lincoln and employ a ton of people up there. So, those are the kind of success stories, obviously, that we want to foster here, both with our existing businesses. But then how do we create a pipeline, working with computer science at the K-State and, and other partners to do that? So, those conversations are advancing, is really, I think, really exciting to hear kind of some insight again from what Lincoln's doing, and had a good representation across local private sector, university, others that are participating in that conversation. And I think that'll become more, some of the, some of the results of that will become more public here over the following months, as, as we try to do some things out in the community to, to get folks operating and talent that's working in those fields together, and then, then push forward some things from a recruitment standpoint, the job opportunity standpoint as well. Also on talent, it's career fair season, so Allison and our team is out, the K-State Career Fair in the middle of, of September, but other career fairs, technical college fairs, veteran fairs. Just a, just a quick, you know, a quick reminder that if, if any of you are talking to companies, or if there's folks listening that are, that are, have companies that are hiring and interested in getting in front of, in front of transitioning soldiers, graduating, or, or soon to graduate college students, or folks looking for internships, or folks at technical colleges. We have some avenues to share those job opportunities, and then go out and promote those job opportunities directly out at those events. So, Allison's the point of contact on that. And then it's also classroom to career season, so this is the program that gets area businesses and entities in front of fourth-grade classes across, just over forty fourth-grade classes between Riley and Potawatomi County in, in multiple different school districts. So, it's a great opportunity for businesses to get in, get students at that early age. The studies show that that's, that's when they start thinking about those things, so getting them in front of students, thinking about careers and understanding that folks at the bank are more than just people that handle money, that there's tech, and there's, and there's administration, and there's, there's a lot of different functions that go on within businesses, and so, that's always a great thing. And then lastly, for me, just a reminder that this afternoon at two o'clock is the ribbon cutting over just north of the, of the hospital there on Kimball of the new childcare accelerator facility, that's part of that childcare business initiative, that's obviously many years in the making, and, and something I think's going to be a great resource for our community and our region, and something that's going to grow. What I'm most excited about all of that, and, and obviously, the state played a big role in that, the governor will be there today to talk. But I'm just excited that we're, that this initiative, A, it's something that's unique, it was grown out of childcare providers investing their time and energy into the process here in the community. But B, it's going to create business owners. So, this isn't just creating more chocolate receipt, it's creating business owners, and that's a great thing for the community, it's a great thing for, for opportunity for folks to, to own a business, build wealth, and, and provide an incredibly important service. And so, I look forward to, it's a great day, and a great day in our community to, to finally be able to celebrate that facility being up and, and ready to go. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, if not, Christian's got a lot of military updates as well. All right, thank you.
Good morning, everyone, as Darren said, my name is Christian Bishop, and I'm the Military Relations Manager. And July was a super busy month, and as everybody knows, PCS season is usually full and swing in that month. And so, it was actually a great time to get out and promote victory, welcome, and our made-for-Manhattan, and actually, our visit Manhattan. And so, in the month of July, we were able to engage with over seven hundred soldiers and family members. And one of the things that was exciting was, of course, you know, the state offered Sunfire Summer Program, and we had eight entities in this community, in this town that participated. And so, we were able to offer that to our family members. But also here, a lot of family members had already signed up and were participating for either seeing it on our social media or our mall cart in the mall. And so, it was just great times. Deployments, First Brigade has officially completed their transfer of thirty, and they are fully activated in Europe for their ninth month deployment. One thirtieth, our Field Artillery Brigade, which is at, at the Armory off of Levy Drive, case the colors. And currently, they're now at Fort Bliss for their month-long prepare, and they will actually head to the Middle East for their year-long deployment. Last week, we featured veteran and Wabunzi Sheriff Eric Kirsch. He is a New York transplant, but married a service member in the Flint Hills, and they chose to retire here. So, it was just kind of great to hear his story, and a call for all of us, just to remember to be human in these times. But we also recognized Cam Hutton, she is the transition service person for Fort Riley. And we mentioned, we hosted our Keep Tour, and since that Keep Tour, I just keep singing this praise. We've had three service members and one spouse receive employment in this community. So, again, just trying to figure out ways and be inventive on how we can keep service members into the community. Our next MRC lunch will be September third at the Holiday Inn Campus, and we will be featuring K-State ROTC Lieutenant Colonel Barton. She's actually a former Big Red One soldier, and her husband is currently the one-five field artillery commander. And they were here two years ago, and they had the opportunity to come back to Fort Riley, so Eric took command. And then she actually became the professor military and the commander of the K-State ROTC. And so, we'll feature her, I kind of say it's our kickoff, because that weekend, we host Army for the K-State football game. And so, I'm super excited, we just finished all the final coordination. And so, not only, while this is a K-State One ID partnership, it is also the Army's two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary. And so, we have some collaboration, again, with One ID, the K-State ROTC, they're bringing out the old Willy Jeep, if anybody remembers that from back in the day. And the one-thirtieth Field Artillery National Guard, they're bringing back the cannons, so just preparing everybody, there will be some booms. And then, as well as the recruiters, will also just be out there and engage. The east and west side static will have displays, activities, and then, of course, we'll have some pre-game and halftime performances by the One ID Band and K-State Band. And then also during the halftime show, they will actually be having an enlistment ceremony. So, currently, there'll be thirty individuals who will be taking that call to oath and committing their services to the Army. So, we are super, super excited for this game. I told everybody yesterday, we were at Fort Riley for the Community Exchange. As much as we love the Army, as much as we love Fort Riley, we are going to bleed purple that day, so. Yes, purple camouflage, so, but we had to remind them who their partner was, so. But then again, I just want to thank everybody for an amazing military appreciation night at the Call Valley rodeo. We had a great picnic, despite the fact that the power did go out. And so, the One ID Band was not able to play for the majority of our picnic, but they were able to come on towards the end, and they did close out with a bang. So, it's always great to hear them, and I always tell them, I appreciate the fact that they almost do a whole concert before the picnic starts, just with their rehearsals and everything. So, again, just thank you guys and to all of our sponsors for another amazing night. And last, I just want to remind you of the upcoming event, so like I mentioned, September third, MRC lunch at eleven-thirty at the Holiday Inn Campus. September sixth, K-State versus Army. September seventh, the Flint Hills Volunteer Center is having their nine-eleven day remembrance. So, they will be giving away four hundred shoes to youth in our community, and also partnering with RCPD for a barbecue, free dinner, touch-a-tuck, lots of activities. So, it's three to six at Katra Hall. September eighth, set your calendars, but Apple Day pre-sale, go, go out. So, if you love apple pie and want to get one, like I said, we will start selling them on September eighth. And then September eleventh on Fort Riley, there is the nine-eleven ceremony at the, at ten AM at the GWAT Memorial. So, pending any questions, that is all for me. Thank you guys again. So pending any questions, that is all for me. Thank you guys again.
Recession.
Or second down.
Food and second, it's recessed, or county commissioners, Venus and Fort Val is favorable.
Good morning, Commissioners, Diane Creek, Health Director. I wanted to update you today on childcare licensing. Just as a little bit of history, in 2016, KDHE and Riley County partnered to provide childcare licensing services to Geary County. In 2018, Riley County added Clay County, Dickinson County was added in 2019. And Potawatomi County was added in 2020. Originally KDHE agreed to fully fund two additional staff people to, to manage the additional work. But over time, the amount that we're getting from KDHE isn't sufficient to cover the costs. So currently Riley County is subsidizing childcare licensing program in those four other counties only. I sent letters to the commissioners in the four counties probably about two weeks ago. I received responses back from all of them that said no. That they would not add additional funding to us. They did say that they thought KDHE was responsible for, for the cost. And so I also sent letters, the same letters to the health directors in each county so that they would know because potentially the workload could fall on them depending on what their commissioners want. So although I don't think it will, I think those counties will have KDHE do the work. So that was kind of a dead end for us. We, I added on here, this is the amount that we have billed and that we've received in the past year. So Riley County, we, we've received $5,912 from facilities. That's licensing fees and, and things like that. Geary County, we've received $1,385. Clay County, we've received 905. Dickinson County was $2,415 and Potawatomi County was $3,265. So total is $13,882, which does not make up that deficit. So, I mean, so yeah, we really are at a dead end at this point. I don't know of any other things we can do. We have billed. We have billed the closed facilities on July 30th. We sent 63 invoices to them. As of August 11th, one person has paid. So I don't think that's really gonna be a good avenue either. And they can't make up the 133,000. I mean, bottom line, even if they all pay, they, it won't make up that. So we're gonna bill them one more time by mail, then we will do a phone call. And then after that, we'll submit them to the debt set off and see if we might be able to get a little bit from there. On August 11th, which was this past Monday, Commissioner Ford, Heather Ritchie and myself participated in a conference call with KDHE. It was pleasant. It was a, it was a good conversation. They understand. I mean, they understand the situation, but they don't have the money. Yeah, 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 yeah. So, so we're not the only county that, that is having issues with this. And so I imagine they're gonna have to take up some slack with more than just us. Yeah, I would guess.
That funding is available and they do that as they came to. For childcare licensing. I, I guess the part of me that I kind of struggle with this and believe that. They're wrong, but it'd be easier to say, oh, but $33,000, we need to then either contract that service out, do that service. It's going to actually cost them. So my hope was is then stand that, go ahead and subsidize the difference. We move on and they move on. But they indicated that funding isn't available, which means they're not gonna, it doesn't subsidize. I don't believe that we should be subsidizing the four other counties. State, states statute or requirements, that's the state, that's the state. So they'll have to deal with that. It's kind of sad, but they'll have to reconfigure what they need to do and how our staff does that.
They'll have to contract. In fact, they, they told us that, you know, if we had any staff that might be interested, they would be willing to, to entertain that thought, but. If our staff are available. It doesn't make, no, they were talking, cause it's gonna be full-time jobs. It's gonna be full-time. Right. If our allegedly, I don't.
They can contract with individual members or staff to do that.
Yeah. They, I mean, they could. And, and so, and other counties have. I think too, what they might be banking on is that other surrounding counties might want to pick up our counties that we've been serving. But Heather has talked to those counties, all the, cause they have a little coalition and none of them are interested in.
What county, what county aren't there to pick that up? Aren't you just gonna pick up?
No. And Dickinson's not gonna, Dickinson's is not gonna pick up Geary, no.
Obviously the other four counties are gonna pick up, it's the other three.
No.
Shawnee County isn't gonna pick up Potawatomi County.
No, no, no.
That, that was the part of the conversation that didn't make sense.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And which we, I just want to, I just want to reference this again. We've done a quality job. That's, that's.
Yes, 100%.
It's, it's, you should be paying for said services.
Yeah, that's right.
And to be honest with you, that's a slap in the face. Because we are about employee services down to our county, but to the other four counties as well.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, probably what's gonna happen is that quality service and professionalism won't be there.
Gonna go down.
June 30th of next year.
Yeah.
So is that any point, but if that's a direction, is I, do you have, do you have a direction now on what to do? Cause I'm not.
We're not gonna do anything. I mean, I don't think we're gonna do anything until February. And then we're gonna reevaluate because we're locked into the contract until June 30th of next year. And so what we're gonna do is we're gonna reevaluate in February. I don't know. I mean, unless we come up with some brilliant idea that some money comes down the pike, I don't know. But, and then even then, I don't know why we wouldn't use that to make up the deficit for Riley County instead of this deficit. So.
Yeah, we need to put them on notice.
Yes, yes, yes. And I told them I would contact them in February when we reevaluate so that they would have plenty of notice. And then when we reapply in March, we'll reapply only for Riley County. So our contract will look different. So, yeah.
I don't know. I'm just worried because the deadline to apply is March, right? And so I wonder if we should start doing those calculations. I don't know, Jay, I'm like, I, I just, I'm afraid that, you know, we'll get them punched.
It doesn't take long to figure it out. It, it's really pretty darn easy to figure it out. You know, cause we're keeping track of it anyway. We're kind of keeping, Erin is keeping a, a rolling total of money that's coming in between her and Heather. Heather's doing all the billing for the current facilities and, and daycares. And then Erin is doing the closed ones. So. Right. Yes.
I guess my question's maybe more for you, but for budgeting purposes, I think we should start. I mean, I was already planning on starting your guys' grant year budgets pretty soon.
We are too.
Okay, okay. So I guess if that's the direction, I just want to make sure we're clear that we're not going past June 30th with childcare licensing and will only take care of Riley County at that point. Okay, perfect. And then for budgets, we'll, I mean, I was thinking of you guys, but.
Unless some changes.
But in the event during that time, some.
Some miracle happens.
And that $130,000 does come up, that still doesn't, still doesn't fit into our, anything budget carry.
Well, I mean, not, not for the other counties. I mean, if the intent is to no longer provide services for those other counties. If, if we get extra money, then that's up for you guys to decide. Do you want to keep providing those services to those other counties? Or do you want to just keep it for Riley County?
Cause there's a deficit for Riley County too.
Yeah.
Yeah, because KDHE just doesn't, it just doesn't pay enough.
Like I said, plus it's a lot. I'd sit that out for two years. I'll let it hold by. I mean, they're not, everybody's really sad.
Right. And they said, even if I asked for a lower amount, like 100,000 or that they couldn't even come up with that. So. Yeah, yeah.
I see it.
They've got the money to contract.
That makes no sense.
Yeah, that makes no sense.
You're, you're right. The salary would be a lot lower because their salaries are lower than ours. But still you've got contracting costs and contracting is expensive.
Those individuals, to my knowledge, are going to be coming from someplace outside of the region.
Yeah.
Got travel costs, so on and so forth that's involved in that too. There's, there's no way that that's gonna actually be cheaper.
No.
Even if there's a difference in salaries.
No.
I was calculating as we were on call Monday. I'm missing something and that's, that's all.
Yeah, you and me too, because it's, it's, doesn't make any.
We discussed separately, you know, it seemed like to me that logistically and financially, the better way to go is just to make up the difference of the $100,000. Everybody just moves forward, but we don't in simplistic terms. So I guess.
$33,000 is small.
Well, but you also have to understand we're not the only ones doing this. There's several other counties that are similar. So it's probably seven digits.
Yes.
I would assume overall.
Yes. Yeah. And I think.
He did mention there was not just us, not just another, I mean, there were several other counties that were following the same lines we, so.
Yeah.
But that makes me believe that at some point in time, there's gonna be a refah, a revamp or remodel of the structure. There just has to be.
Yeah.
We all know that this.
Well, this is childcare licensing, which everybody's concerned about childcare. We gotta provide, we gotta do it, right? You can't put them all on the backs of your parents. It's too expensive.
You know.
I think if we cut it out, all these others, we can't start cutting it out. They're gonna have to go back and go, well.
Yeah, they're gonna have to reevaluate and see what they're doing. And plus KDHE's in the process of. Governor Kelly created a new department. And so, and I can't remember what the name of that. Early childhood or something. And so childcare licensing is gonna move to that department. They're gonna start the moving of the different programs into that department in January. And, you know, they said that there's more money in that department, but there's no guarantee that childcare licensing will get that money. So, so, yeah.
Just tracking, would it be better for us to maybe reevaluate that in, let's say, in November instead of February? There's still workfalls.
I mean, February, I'm ready to spend and just brought to you the approval. So no, I would, yes, please, November.
To be honest with you guys, we should be far better than just cycle.
Not there. Okay. Okay. All right, we'll do that. And then we can make the final decision in February, but I don't see where it's gonna be anything different. Yeah. Yeah, that's true. That's true. In November.
I'll give you some, maybe you see, they go back and maybe think that through for a little common sense.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm trying to be positive for you.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna happen, but yeah, yeah, we can, we can hope. So I probably won't do then an update unless something changes or unless, you know, if something changes between now and October, November. I'm not gonna update you monthly because there's really nothing to update at this point. We've kind of expended all of our options. And I know Heather was gonna talk to providers and see if they could advocate, but. I mean, I don't know how good that's gonna go either. I mean, I think they will advocate for us, but because they, they appreciate the service that we give. Cause KDHE did say that we were really good at what we do. And so, yeah, they were very complimentary. That was nice. So, okay, so on to my other, not really problem child, but, cause it's working out. So, you know, months ago, WIC was, sent an email that we owed $5,000 for a license to stay at the hospital on the base on, at Fort Riley. At the hospital um on the base on at Fort Riley. Um so we did a lot of negotiating, um they want us on the base, there's no doubt about it. They do want us to stay there, but there's some kind of a rule or something that says that there's supposed to be a five thousand dollar. License fee and it's for a five-year period of time, and so.
Basically, this is the way I understand it in the Garrison's office. It's basically to say that you are a civilian contracted service company, whatever that is. And that you're being allowed to be on the military installation. These aren't rules through Fort Riley itself, it's actually rules through the court engineers who. Actually addresses and does the licensing and program, so there's about four different layers of government involved in this process.
Yes. It's complicated, and allegedly what we learned yesterday is that the five thousand dollars is. Basically, the cost of people. Doing the license, it's it's like administrative costs. And so um and that that's the cheapest license that there is. There isn't any that are cheaper than that. So anyway, we did a lot of emails back and forth, um Commissioner Ford did a lot of. A lot of work on his end um to try to get this all figured out. Um we were sitting. About two weeks ago, thinking that we were gonna stay at the hospital and that. I don't know, one of the other departments at the, at the base were going, at the installation, were going to pay the five thousand dollars. But then we got an email that said, no, that wasn't gonna happen. And so what we're gonna do now is we're gonna move from the hospital. Over to building two ten. Um we went and toured it yesterday, um Caitlin, who's the supervisor for WIC. And Cory, who's, who's the department head for IT and I. Uh went and toured the space, it's a fine space, it needs a little bit of paint. Um but it'll work, it's it's big enough, uh it's in a good location. It's in the in and out building, so so they use that building a lot for a lot of different things. Um so there's.
Garrison's internal, correct?
Yeah, it is, it is.
Don't have to worry about, I say that because um with the civilian staff that works with the Garrison's office, that's not a permanent basis. The Garrison obviously changes, but.
Yeah.
How they operate you, this, this does not.
Yeah.
But the state assists that moving forward.
Yeah, yeah, um she, the, the lady who took us on the tour yesterday. Um said that we could, and I don't understand the Fort Riley. Culture, um so she said though that while this Garrison commander is here, which is for another two years. We will not have to pay the license fee. But then after that, depending on who the new Garrison commander is, we might. But she didn't think so, but she couldn't guarantee us, so I said, well, we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we get there. Um so anyway, so. Um we are gonna start working on. Making plans to move, IT is probably one of the most critical things right now. Because IT was hard to set up at the hospital. Um so Cory is, is working on that and they're working on getting him a contact. With the right people over at Fort Riley. Um we're also going to have to get approval from KDHE to make this move, so. Um we're getting a floor plan today and um. A draft of a license and we'll send that up to KDHE and get their approval to move. Um.
She was on that end, that mean.
Not that I know of. I can't imagine, um we exchanged some emails.
The idea of licensure.
Yes.
So.
Yes.
I can't see that.
Yes, and I can't imagine, you know, there's nothing wrong with the space, there's nothing wrong with the location. I don't know.
I think one thing to take into consideration here, I know. Being attached to the hospital is probably logistically a little bit better. But by all accounts, there's gonna be some changes going on at the facility.
Yes.
Seeing wrapped up in the red tape and everything that's going on with that.
Yes.
Or we're really leaving it that a lot of you and the staff focus on the service that they're providing. So I think in the short term, that may seem um kinda bad, I think in the long term, you're gonna look back on and go, this would be the move.
Yeah, I think they're starting, you know, staff at first were a little apprehensive about the change. Um because obviously, you know, pregnant and postpartum clients are at the hospital. That's kind of the logical place to be, but they go in the in and out building all the time anyway, and so um. And just the red tape and all of the complications that come from being in the hospital, because it's not only that. It's all the extra meetings they have to go to, all the extra trainings they have to do, so. Because they're in the hospital.
In the hospital and to a community clinic.
Yes.
And be a hospital potentially, so.
Yes, yes.
Doesn't solve the original problem.
Yeah, so I think the move will be a good one, I think, um and, you know, Caitlin was seeing that. The benefits of it yesterday, so um we just might have to do some painting and kinda sprucing up, you know, it was kind of a. An army blue color um that, yeah, kinda needs brightened up a little bit, so. I said, well, we can, we can find some paint, so we'll take care of that. Cory was gonna find some desks um with the downtown remodel. Evidently, there's some desks that aren't gonna be reused, so um because the desks that they had down there. Were left by the prior tenants and they're just very thin computer type desks. And so it would be hard to do paperwork on those. No, these were blue, it's blue, gray, black, something like that, they were, no. Um we're not, nothing will be provided by. The base, um except just for the space, uh and the space. Will be down there on the lower level of two ten, um red cross is down there. And also security, so and security is where they. Uh get their ID badges and all that kinda stuff, whatever military gets. Um that's where they do that and do all their security clearances and their fingerprints and all that, so um. So anyway, so yeah, it'll be a nice quiet space, the waiting room is big enough, the offices are way really too big. Um they're big, they're bigger than my office, I would guess, so um yeah. So the space will work for sure. So we're looking at, it depends on IT, how, how quick they can get good internet service there. Um we have to move out by the first part, actually, and that is wrong, I said. Needs to take place by the end of December, it's really the first of December, first part of December. Um so yeah, so it was a good meeting yesterday, it was like, we were there for a couple hours. They were very nice, they were very welcoming, they were, they were good, so I think it'll be a good spot, so. So that's that for WIC, otherwise they're doing great, they're still picking up some clients. You know, from Gary County, uh losing their WIC program. Um so we're still picking up clients from there as well, so our numbers are going up. Um so that's all of that. My next thing that I have is an out-of-state travel request. Um for a zero to three conference. So Tammy Feldcamp with MCH and uh Sarah Haybarker from MCH. Are gonna go to Baltimore, Maryland, October seventh through the tenth for a zero to three conference. Um they will bring back, you know, just like the rest of them, they'll bring back whatever information and share it with. Uh the other programs, um zero to three is, is nationally known, it's a really good conference, so. Um the fiscal impact, oh, I should have erased that part, um. Alrighty then, so we've got workforce development money to pay for this, so um there's. There will be no cost, basically to the county, we'll use um the MCH portion of that. So I need a motion to approve that. If that's okay with you guys.
Motion to approve the out-of-state travel to the Learn Conference in Baltimore. For Sarah, Sarah Haybarker in Tammy Feldcamp, from October seventh through the tenth, twenty twenty-five.
Then who can second approve the out-of-state travel to the Learn Conference in Baltimore for Sarah Haybarker and Tammy Feldcamp.
Thank you, Commissioners. I guess it would make much better.
Yeah.
Okay, I'd make a motion to recess as the Board of County Health and the County Board of County.
And move and secondly, move to recess if the Board, County Board of House, we need to meet with the County Board of Commissioners all in favor.
Morning Commissioners, Brittany Phillips, Budget and Finance Officer, here to present the monthly cash flows, so first we have economic development. Um and I don't know if you remembered, but last month I was like, oh no, I wonder if I forgot anything in June, we actually didn't have any expenditures in June. I did go back and double check, so I didn't forget, and so that's nice. Then we, in July, we had thirty thousand five hundred dollars, bringing our unencumbered cash to three thirteen seven forty-two. Next, we have county building, we brought in fifty-three dollars and fifty cents. And then spent eleven thousand nine seventy-six eighty-nine, bringing our unencumbered cash balance to four forty-two, two forty-six. CIP, we brought in three hundred and thirty-five thousand one hundred and seventy dollars. Um and didn't have any expenditures in July either, we did have um really weird AP going through, like not, not weird AP, but. Like smaller stacks of AP, we were like, oh, we're, we're gonna get hit hard in August, once that comes, so um. Triple check that one too, so our unencumbered cash balance is twenty-eight million eight ninety-eight eight seventy-six. Half cent sales tax, we brought in twenty-nine thousand one hundred and eighty-nine dollars, or sorry, spent twenty-nine thousand one hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Um bringing our unencumbered cash balance to six million one fifty-one, one hundred and thirty-one dollars. Our other sales tax, we brought in two hundred and thirty-one thousand seven seventy-six um with no expenditures to date. Bringing in our unencumbered cash balance to six million four oh six six twelve. And of course, we have the ARPA in here um to date, so, or at least through July. Um and it shows all the projects and everything we've spent to date, um so UP Fire, this estimate that we went off of. Uh was from the Ashland Fire Station, um and obviously, we know this one had to have the water and sewer lines um go in. So that's why this one shows that it's over budget here, so if you had any questions about that, that's, that's why. It costs what?
It's gonna be over twenty-five thousand to have both of those done.
For the water line, I'd have to go back and check the bids, I don't remember what they were at. And then EMS headquarters, we're still finishing up paying some bills there, but long-listed bills. Um so you know, we've spent ten million three thirteen five sixteen here, so. And then he's, uh she is finishing up using one of uh the technical assistance grants that she got from the Kansas Water Office. And is going to start utilizing the remaining funds here, so. And then the remodel for EM, this is what we set last year as an estimate, the two point two four five. I know it's more than that now, so um I can update that number, but as we get kinda settled on final numbers, I'll update that with the. Uh guaranteed maximum price after that's approved, so, and then North County EMS, this one is finished, um and that is the final thing. Anything else you need from me, any questions?